Okay, good evening, everyone. It is Monday, March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four, in the Susan's Valley Labs Lead Boardroom of the eighteen eighty seven building. And I'd like to start the evening out by saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the free dollar according to Stamps for One Nation Under God Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Tedlock, would you um do a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Andre.
Here.
Well, note, Mr. Gateheart is excused. Mr. Gatton?
Here.
Mrs. Dingersol?
Here.
Mrs. Costa?
Here.
Mrs. Reckles?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
We'll note that our student reps, Mr. Barkus and Mr. Porster, excuse them, it's Denver.
We do have a forum, and this meeting was noticed per state statutes. So it looks like we have a few people who would like to speak tonight, so. I'm going to just uh do a quick statement, uh read us quick statement. Hopefully, you've all signed in and um by the sign-in sheet by the door. I just want to remind the community, participation period is an important time for the Board of Education to hear concerns, gratitude, et cetera, of its constituents. That said, prior to making a statement, please be aware that each speaker bears the personal risk if anything they say during community participation of the school board meeting is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. I'll take these in the order that they were given to me. Um, you have three minutes to speak. And um, the first person up will be Steve Perkins.
Adam, I'm handing something out right now that I don't want to ever say in front of people that might be at homes and have little kids around. I'll have to take a picture and email it to you so you can understand where I'm coming from. Hello, my name is Steve Perkins. A few weeks ago, I was talking with another parent on the topic of Elkhorn's book banning came up. He was adamantly opposed and mentioned the seven classics. He suck. He said he saw the full report and it's a matter of context that the kids get it from other kids and social media. I asked him, in what context is it okay if a book has a word that is highlighted in front of you on the page? Should children be allowed to use this language that they see in books and schools? When were the kids and parents concerned with the kids pick or? When we were kids, our parents were concerned of kids picking up bad things from other kids. It was never from the school itself. This is what common middle ground was. It shouldn't be coming from the school. The topic of book bans has gotten so heated in Elkhorn and abroad, not even some that are happy knowing that this parent who filed followed policy is getting death threats. Let that sink in for a bit, because apparent challenged materials, people are okay if they are killed. Last I heard, there were less than a hundred parents that opted in for their Karen, for their kids to check out the restricted books. Now there's discussion of parents having to opt out next year. At the last policy meeting, somebody mentioned how DPI doesn't like it when schools opt in. This is the same DPI that issued a survey last year, asking ten and eleven-year-olds if they have a plan on how they wanted to kill themselves, or if they started having sex under the age of eight. Why do educators feel it's their duty to expose children to this material? Last time I spoke, I asked what kind of people want this in front of their children? There's good and bad people in history and in society. In nineteen forty-nine, Alice Bailey died, and before she passed, she wrote her ten-point charter, and it says the following. Take God and prayer out of the education system, reduce parental authority over the children, destroy the Judeo-Christian family structure. If sex is free, then make abortion legal and make it easy. Make divorce easy and legal, free the people for the free people from the concept of marriage for life. Make homosexuality an alternative lifestyle. Debase art, make it run mad, use media to promote and change mindsets. Create an inner faith movement, get governments, get governments to make all these laws and get the churches to endorse these changes. I'll let you decide where we are in society, but most importantly, I'll let you decide where you think we are in our town of Elkhorn. Thank you.
Next up is Ellen Holly.
Mr. Perkins?
I get death threats every election.
And that sucks.
It does suck.
Yes, and it's not, it's not okay.
But every election. Ellen Holly Sugarfreak.
I'm retired educator with thirty-four years of experience in grades pre-K through master's degree. The last twenty years were in the Elkhorn Area School District. I've been an active volunteer, the community as poll worker, religious education teacher, war rage leader, sexual assault victim advocate with new beginnings. I'm also on the advisory board of the Elkhorn Fund, which has provided more than a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to nonprofits in the Elkhorn Area School District. And yes, for the Walworth County Democrats. Along with hundreds of others, I'm proud of my volunteering for this group over the last several years. We advocate for healthy communities and strong public schools. On January third, two thousand and twenty-four, Devin Gatton posted on his Facebook page that he hoped things stayed civil and truthful rather than focusing on personal attacks and misinformation. And unfortunately, did not last long. On February first, Mr. Gatton posted that he recommended staying away from Richard Lady Vaughn and Kyle Gordon because they're extremely leftist and want to push a referendum down the community's throat without cutting anything. What does that mean, leftist? He then continued that both of them were bought and sold by the Walworth County Democrats and the Democratic Party of Wisconsin. It is a fact that neither candidate is a member of the Walworth County Dems, nor have they been endorsed or received funding or other resources from either group. He stated that, since I often sat beside these candidates at meetings, I must be running the show. Mr. Gatton even argued with me about being the chair, even though I have not held a leadership position since December of two thousand and twenty-two, after stepping down due to significant health issues. Mr. Gatton states that partisan politics do not go along on the school board, and I agree. It is interesting, though, that his campaign signs are prominently displayed in the local GOP office. On February twelfth, Mr. Gatton states that after the last meeting, which was on the twenty-ninth of January, that Mr. Gordon, Mrs. Vaughn, and I were speaking for thirty minutes after the meeting talking strategy. That is not true. Bridget, Kyle, and I were discussing the Nazi demonstration that took place on the UW campus where two of her daughters currently attend. Shame on me for caring about my former students and comforting their mother. Bridget and Kyle have implemented an independent respectful campaign without the influence of outside political and religious organizations. Mr. Gatton's social media posts have been full of dog whistles, hateful rhetoric, and personal attacks. This reflects poorly, just not in his campaign and on the school board as a whole. I think we all can agree that the school board should be working on problem-solving and building consensus rather than promoting pointless divisiveness. Thank you.
Okay, next up is John Lee. I'll sit so it's everyone else isn't.
My purpose for, I'm John Lee. Um, I live in Elkhorn. I was a teacher here for sixteen years, both at Westside and at the middle school. And I guess my goal in this whole election and the whole finance stuff is just to make sure that people really understand what some of these numbers actually mean. I know that we've been throwing around online a lot, the fourteen to one or fourteen point one students to one teacher ratio, and that's full-time educators. I just want to put some perspective on that. That simply means that in all of the district, there are fourteen kids for each full-time educator, person that we've hired to be a teacher. Not a paraprofessional, not a cook, not a count, like not someone who does auxiliary-type jobs and not also administrators. Um, in the meantime, I also did some digging about Burlington. And so I just want to share with you what I wrote today in response to an article that I read on the Journal Times, talking about Burlington's referendum failing and them having to choose or having chosen to close one of their elementary schools, Lion Center Elementary. So here's what I wrote. If anyone wants an idea of what could happen to Elkhorn Area School District if we don't go to referendum in the fall, or if we go and it doesn't pass, look no further than Burlington. With the failure of their referendum, they will be closing one elementary school, moving fifth grade to the middle school, cutting thirty-five to forty positions. They will need to change school boundaries so that the kids may have to switch schools. They're also looking at shortening their school year and extending their days by fifteen minutes to meet the DPI required minutes. And they still will need to come up with additional funds to cut and hope that they can pass a different referendum in the fall. Burlington was working with lower class sizes than what we work with in Elkhorn, and they were also working with more money per pupil than we you than we have here in Elkhorn. So, and then the rest of my post was just to stay informed. There are ninety-one different school districts in Wisconsin that are currently in referendum for the spring vote. They're all sitting in the same position. It is not by fault of any financial issues that have gone on with school districts. It is merely just the way the federal or the state government has chosen to allocate funds. And I just wanted to point out that um even if you took forty teachers or forty staff members from Burlington and cut their positions, their class to educator rate or class to staff member, all staff members in the district ratio would be eight point four eight to one. If we do nothing, ours is still eight point seven students for one person in the district. So even if we do nothing, we're still sitting worse than Burlington, who has to cut forty positions. Thank you.
Um, there were no other cards filled out, so um the community participation uh period is closed. Um, we're gonna move on to um approval of the school board minutes. Did anybody have any questions or corrections? I did um have one that I wanted to bring up, if somebody else has anything. Um, on the third page, Mr. Tedlock, um it noted, I mean, this is a really, really minor thing, but um it did notice on the announcements um that the candidate forum was March fourteenth, but it was actually on March thirteenth, so.
We'll make a note of that. I don't know if I announced it incorrectly or.
I don't, yeah, I don't know either.
If. Jody rarely makes a.
I know she does. Yeah, it's pretty rare, so that it's very possible. Anything else? Done looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve the minutes of the March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four regular school board meeting as per as modified.
Is there a second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four regular session school board meeting as modified. All in favor, say aye. Oh, sorry. Thank you for that correction. Um, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre?
Abstain.
Mr. Gatton?
Yes.
Mrs. Dingersol?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yeah.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Upstate.
And um moving on to the general and, is that right? Yeah, general and other fund bills, yeah.
The uh general other fund bills this evening covers checks number one five one, seven fifty through one five one eight six five, wire transfers, seven ninety-five through seven ninety-six, and ACH checks number six forty-six through six eighty-five, the combined amount of three million nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. And you'll notice that this is one of the timeframes where we do our debt payments, so that would be our interest of principal payment, so that's about three point seven of the total bills. Yeah, and we do it twice a year, so interest of principal is paid in April, and then we do an interest payment in October each year.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Trum? Seeing none, then looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, check numbers one five one, seven five zero to one five one eight six five. Wire number seven ninety-five to seven ninety-six, NACH number six four six to six eight five, and the combined amount of three million nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars and need five cents is presented.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, check numbers one five one, seven five zero to one five one eight six five, wire number seven ninety-five to seven ninety-six, and ACH number six four six to six eight five in the combined amount of three million nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gatton?
Yes.
Mrs. Dingersol?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Okay, moving on uh to the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five school meal prices. And I think we have Ashley Drake presenting this.
Hi, I'm Ashley Drake. I am the new food service supervisor, so.
It's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too. So just a little bit about myself. I was just appointed this position last month in February. Prior to that, um, two years as a food service admin assistant, I've been employed with Elkhorn Area School District since two thousand and twenty. Um, I strive to provide students with nutritious meals, try new entrees and sides, really pushing the fresh fruit and veggies, build relationships with kids, staff, and my department. Um, feeding kids is a work of heart, and I am passionate about my role, my team, and the students that we feed every day, so next slide. These are our current meal prices right now. Breakfast is currently at one twenty-five at the elementary, one fifty-five at the middle school, and the high school. Um, lunch right now is two forty, middle school is two fifty-five, and high school is two sixty-five, and our milk prices are at thirty-five cents. So currently, this is a breakdown of breakfast with our current price comparisons. Um, as you can see, I have it broken down with elementary, middle school, and high school. Um, Delvin, East Troy, Whitewater, and then ourselves. Burlington and Lake Geneva is not included in this because they actually offer free breakfast to all their students. That is a cost to that school. They do not get reimbursements for that, um, so it's something that they participated in, most other schools do not. So as you can see, we are standing pretty good, and then Elkhorn, you'll see in the next slide, um, has the lowest prices um at the middle school and high school level, and we have a lot more choices at the middle school and high school level as compared to the elementary. So we can just look at that. So my proposal for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year is, obviously, I know, you know, things are very expensive these days. Uh-huh, so I would like to keep breakfast, as is just knowing that we did increase that last year for the first time in quite some time. Um, but I would like to increase the elementary lunch by five cents, uh, middle school by ten cents, and then as well for the high school. Also proposing that we uh increase the milk from thirty-five to forty. We're the only school district that has milk at thirty-five cents, so it would put us in line with all the other districts surrounding us. So, next slide. So, reasons why I'm coming to you guys to ask for the increase. There has been a huge change in federal reimbursement rates since COVID. Um, I'm currently receiving half of what we used to in previous years. Um, I'm sure you guys go to the grocery store and you can tell the price of food. Uh, it's very, very expensive. We just got the salad bar launched at high school, which is fantastic. I'm super proud of it, but it is expensive. It's very expensive. Um, also, the middle school is now reaching over twenty years old. I had to just buy a new warmer for the middle school, and that cost me eighteen thousand dollars versus twelve, twelve thousand dollars back in two thousand and three when it was built. So even though I am asking for meal increases, Elkhorn would still remain the lower in the surrounding areas. That is it.
Is increasing um that cost going to help me for a new warmer?
It it would. Uh, I was able, that's taken out of my budget, so, um, but I think about it, like if my dishwasher goes down at the middle school, that's gonna cost me eighty-two thousand dollars, so just trying to be conscious about my budget and trying not to. I have great dreams of salad bars and fresh produce, but that comes at a cost too.
Yeah.
So I, with that, I need to bump it up. I'm not gonna do anything drastic, but it is little by little each year.
Yeah.
I think the point that Ashley just made is kind of those small increment kind of adjustment needed as opposed to a large adjustment. And even with the price comparison.
Everyone's at like three dollars, like our kids eat for a steal at the high school.
Yeah.
Some of those. You've been a lot in the salad bar in in general, but.
I always try to plant my meat into the school.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure where else you can eat for that in excess of the.
What's the milk prices of the others for those?
Um, like for lunch?
No, just for milk.
For milk. Oh, it's, everyone's at forty cents except us.
Okay.
And it's, we've always been at thirty-five cents, so.
Thank you.
You mentioned something about having a plan for the dishwasher going down at the middle school. Is that in the budget plan going?
Um, hopefully not. It's just gonna be pro act, knowing that we have not raised meal prices for a long time.
Yeah.
Um, I don't wanna go drastically, like I'm not gonna tell parents, you are paying a dollar extra, I'd rather go.
No, that's totally, totally understandable. No, I'm just thinking about, do you have other equipment that is aging down or?
We, and I, we did not have a preventative maintenance plan in place, and I'm working with the company right now to get that going to help, you know, cover that, so.
Are you finding that um most people are able to keep up with their lunch accounts and?
Yeah, it's, um, I've been, it was not in a good place when I took over, and it's at a very reasonable place now.
Okay.
I even have the cohort at Lake Geneva reaching out to me, asking how I did it, because I took a big chunk down.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
And we have angel funds, which is a beautiful thing.
We did have the angel.
Yes, and it's been a huge help, so anyone who has donated in this room and has helped a lot of families this year.
Sure.
If you go to classmunity.com and it's like Elkhorn, you can find there's a fundraising portal for those that want to donate to that purpose to help families who are caught in that middle spot where they have a lunch balance that don't qualify for the federal subsidies, so we do have those donations there.
Yep, okay. Does anybody have any other questions for?
If I could, if I could jump in real quick, Ashley, Ashley, welcome to the role and and thank you for stepping in. Um, I'm I'm sure I'll be seeing you soon, because this is uh, this is right in my wheelhouse. But if if Jason, if you can scroll back to the meal costs real quick. Um, Ashley, when you have on here a middle school breakfast or or middle school lunch, and that's a meal, what is it, what does a meal consist of?
So for breakfast, it's going to be a two-ounce grain of fruit, um, like a half cup of fruit, and then the milk. And then at lunch, it's three of the five components, so fruit, vegetable, grain, meat, meat alternative, and then with your milk.
Okay, okay, yeah, that, this is, this is pretty good then. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep. What are calories running like for a lunch at?
Well, I, so we have to follow like script DPI guidelines, that they are within those guidelines.
And what, what is that?
I wanna say it's between five fifty and six fifty for the high school. I have, I did not come with a chart, so it's lower, obviously, for the little ones.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. Well, looking for a motion to approve the school meal prices.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school meal prices as presented.
Is there a second?
Go ahead.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school meal prices. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gatton?
Yes.
Mrs. Dingersol?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Right, motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, first reading of the new and revised policies, um, now the flag policy.
All right, the policy committee has reviewed the um, American flag policy is the title of it, and so this will be a first reading. Well, this has been provided in the board packet. Are there any questions? Really, the policy outlines proper protocol for displaying the flags, keeping them in good condition, lowering and um storing them, following the proper flag etiquette. It's just codifying following those procedures.
Go ahead, Kathy. I was gonna say, um, who's doing the training? You're gonna be down to any of our local vets. Or the VW. BMW. Yeah, anything like that, that way we were pulling from local resources.
Uh, we certainly close part of that.
Yeah, trying to process.
Yeah, part of the, the details.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, in terms of the policy, part of the.
I think it's part of the onboarding, just for that consistency, we'll probably want to create for those that are interacting and or handling, restoring all the maintenance and that structure, make sure that that training is just probably more of a digital training, uh, video reviewing of the property training. Sign up on this, we announce, take the care.
There's only one word that I'd like to add, and that would be the last sentence of the first paragraph. Uh, this policy establishes guidelines for properly displaying the American flag and all school district property. I have not observed this in any capacity at all, but um I have observed it quite often in the community as a whole where a flag is displayed uh in a vertical manner, and the the union is displayed on the wrong side. And so I just want to make sure that when they, whenever we're displaying the flag in a vertical position, that the union is on the left side. Um, so I just want to add that one word. To make sure that, you know, displays, because I see it all the time out in the community, not necessarily in our schools, but, but.
All right, this is just the first review, so if anything else comes up, we can make that point.
Sure.
The next one is.
Right. Next one is the uh three, four, five point one one class rank and lodee system.
All right, this is just providing um greater clarity or coordination with how a honor point is earned and counted. We found some discrepancy because we follow a trimester schedule for our classes, and some of our courses, the students can take them for dual credit within the high school, like a gateway course through a teacher, and it's over two trimesters, whereas they can take it through gateway where it's a one semester, and so it hasn't matched up in the formula the same way, so this proposed language would correct that. There's also a, we want to change lodee point to lodee score, because there's often confusion between honor point and lodee point. Um, they fill the score, which is a combination of your honor points multiplied by GPA, would maybe lessen that confusion. And I think the other large difference to change with adding additional courses, which were identified to be at that college level, which is kind of that rigor uh level, which we identify for the honor point-bearing courses. Then I do want to add at the bottom of this, and well, let me speak more to this. Initially, it was proposed looking at the modern languages such as German III, German IV, autos III, welding III, band and choir years III and IV, drawing III, ceramics. autos three, welding three, band and choir years three and four, drawing three, ceramics three, and painting three would be awarded those honor points. And we noticed it's a challenge and, and we've struggled to find colleges that we could partner with to give those advanced band courses, give those opportunities for the students. So we wanna address the performing arts area. The guidance office did come back and they reiterated, oh, is it not included here? That they would like us to, and I could add that language, they would like to slowly roll into this, including just the, the band and the choir, three and four at this time. Not the other additional courses. That was their recommendation, wanted to make sure that, I wanted to reiterate that, that they wanted to, to add the band and the choir, but not all of those other additional courses.
Jason, Jason, if you click on recommendation, you can go to that.
So this is the language they would like to submit under the honor point to provide that clarity. And that would just be wind ensemble, chamber choir. So am I missing, they would prefer the or, correct, Sarah?
That's correct.
And when would the other language start following it?
No, they, for right now, they just fill, I don't, could you speak more to that, Sarah?
Yeah, what was the reasoning behind them not including the other courses?
Right now, it's creates some issues in Skyward as far as tracking goes. If we re, if we do the first language and we say Spanish three, Spanish four, instead of years, three and four, that makes it a little bit easier to track and for registration of courses in the Skyward system. We might have to pay some extra fees to try to fix the tracking. And so if, if that's the case and this add-on to help us be able to track this is something that we can't afford, the or language would be the easiest to kind of ease into until we can make this a little bit more efficient and streamlined.
Sarah, maybe you can speak to this. I'm looking at the or right now. I know that there's several students that do, that are in those upper level music courses that do both wind ensemble and chamber choir gold, but they split their time because they meet at the same time. Would you be awarding a half a point for each class or just a half a point?
For each class that they would be enrolled in.
Okay.
Good question.
The other option, if, if the board, I know the policy committee, when we discussed that, felt that the other courses were aligned to that college level, if that's the sentiment, then we'll just have to figure it out. And.
But it's really nice to know how much that, that decision's gonna cost us to.
Whether we have to manually calculate it or, you know, have a program in the Skyward, we would have to figure that out. So I, I think it was more of a, oh, that's a number of classes to add. There was also concern, what would that do to the breakdown of the sumakum lottie, the lottie, the lottie? Does that distort it or, or inflate those numbers, which we wouldn't know until. See what that overall addition is.
Well, do you guys wanna figure it out and bring it back to the board or the policy?
Well, this, this is their recommendation that they have there. Of the guidance office.
But it seems.
And we've got other students that are participating at the higher level.
Yeah, it seems.
Should be rewarded as well as anybody else, so I think we need to figure it out.
Yeah, I think so too. I, I would hate to say to, you know, Spanish four student, that, I'm sorry, you didn't get that, you know, the lottie point because, you know, we don't have a way to track it. That seems kind of.
Yeah, how did we do this before?
Well, we haven't.
You, you kinda nailed it, you know, we need to do this manually.
We'll work through it.
So what I'm hearing is there's a preference towards, this one again, it's a first reading, we'll bring it back to vote.
Okay, moving on to personal recommendations.
Right, we have a resignation of John Watson, who's accepted a position over at Gateway Technical College. I want to thank him for his near two years of service. Margaret Lee Strober, who, this will be her last year as a sports staff member. And the resignation of Kayla Crane from the Heights Holden Athletics Assistant Coaching Physician. They won state, she figured I ain't one now. Thank Kayla for her service and I know she has kids who are very active and we appreciate her time that she spends helping with that team and again, a congratulations to them. Appointment of Dalton Bray is a Tivens Head Custodian. Bobby Nell is Westside Special Education Teaching Assistant. Kristen Gibson is a Westside Special Education Teaching Assistant. And Matthew Swanson as a middle school custodian.
For a motion to approve the personal recommendation sheet.
I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented.
Second. My second. So moved and seconded to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Costeau?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Sparrow?
Yes.
Acceptance of school gifts. We don't have any gifts received?
No gifts present this evening.
And then the summer school budget.
This evening, the board's being asked to consider approving the two thousand twenty-four summer school program traditionally. That comes to the board now because technically our summer school program runs across two fiscal years.
Right.
June to July, and so in a sense, you're approving a July expenditure at, at kind of the same time. We also try to line up the total of cost of the program to balance out with the FTE that it calculates through the revenue cap calculation. So that basically becomes a balanced program in terms of expenses and revenues.
Yeah.
Program will run mostly at the middle school like it has traditionally in terms of first through eighth grade. And then the high school have their program and then Jackson has the getting ready for kindergarten program here at Jackson Elementary. And the program runs two weeks in June, two weeks in July. The high school program runs a little longer for credit purposes. Other than, other than that, Mr. Frost has been working with staff in terms of staffing the program, getting the, the teachers. And I know the registration has already begun for this year's summer school. So it's slightly outside of another. And the FTE is always, it's always an estimate, but we will find out after the completion of the summer school. It's been pretty consistent between that seventy and seventy-four students.
I've seen districts in the past when they get into financial pinches, make the mistake of dropping the summer school. Thinking, feeling like it'll be a monetary savings, which they might get in the short term, but then their overall student equity goes down. And then when they wanted to go to start summer school and they had a neighboring district ask, well, how do you guys fund this, how do you work it? It takes several years of that three-year rolling average to build the FTE back up to cover the cost of summer school. So I know Bill and the summer school team, Mr. Frost oversees that summer school program. They've done a very good job of operating the black. I am providing a great resource.
It also helps us in the, with the, with the balancing from the state, right? Like they give us additional funds, so that's all.
Yeah, so if we count the minutes that they're in class and that counts as additional students to the revenue.
Gotcha. It helps us for revenue cap calculation and also state aids.
Yeah, it's a win-win. My kids always enjoy participating in it. Yeah. Okay.
We're doing a motion.
Yep, need a motion to approve the summer school budget.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-four summer school budget as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty-four summer school budget as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart is excused. Mr. Gavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Costeau?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Sparrow?
Yes.
Okay, announcements?
We have a couple of announcements. The policy committee will meet on Monday, April first, eleven o'clock P M. And on Monday, April first, the curriculum council will also meet at six o'clock P M. And then the election canvas will take place on Tuesday, April ninth, at the district office, beginning at eight o'clock P M. And election day is Tuesday, the second. That's when the canvas, the, the vote toll, verifying and. Sort of like certifying the election, I guess.
Yeah, Mr. Sparrow will not be available to do that. That would be in his normal duties, but he's not available. So Mr. Andre will be taking that ball this year. Okay, just need a motion to adjourn to close session.
I move that we adjourn to contemplate closed session pursuant to state statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent C. To discuss upcoming vacancies and professional staff contracts, the school board will not reconvene in open session.
I'll second it.
So moved and seconded to adjourn to contemplate a closed session to discuss upcoming vacancies and professional staff contracts. We will not reconvene in open session. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Costeau?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Sparrow?
Yes.